I'd like to call tonight's meeting back to order. Your roll call, please.
The record will reflect that Mayor Pro Tem Hill has an excused absence.
Mr. City Attorney, is our closed session report?
Thank you, Mayor Curry. There's no closed session report this evening.
Thank you. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilmember Hen, followed by the invocation, which will be led by Mr. Frank Carpenter.
Please join me. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in an invocation. Heavenly Father, thank you for this beautiful city where we have the privilege to work and live. Thank you for this new facility and the promise it brings. We thank you for these civil servants and these citizens who care enough to be here and participate in the political process. We just ask your blessing on us tonight. We ask you would give us wisdom and patience with one another, and we pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Okay, let me invite Mr. Eddie Marquez from Southern California Edison to come forward. When the city council embarked on the journey to create our new Civic Center and Park, one of our objectives was to increase the efficiency of the facility and build in sustainability. As such, our city staff and architectural team have been working closely with our partners at Southern California Edison to achieve our goal through the participation in their Savings by Design program. And, Mr. Marquez, welcome, and I'm happy to introduce you for presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's always a pleasure to be here in front of you, always. Council and senior staff, thank you for always making me feel very welcome here. It really gives me great pleasure and privilege to be here tonight. I'd like to congratulate the City of Newport Beach on the completion of their new Civic Center project and their continued dedication to energy efficiency and sustainability. The 261,150 and 14 cent check that I have here is an incentive that will help the city offset some of the costs of building energy efficiently, including state-of-the-art lighting, mechanical, and building design features. These energy efficiency measures, coupled with the building's high-tech measurement and verification systems, will help the city operate the building energy efficiently for years to come, saving the city an estimated $50,000 per year in electricity and natural gas costs over a code-compliant building. We look forward to our continued partnership, and I'm not sure if the check has already been hand-delivered, but I've got this ceremonial check here to present here tonight. And, again, I really want to commend you on the excellent work that you did in making this an energy-efficient building. So, kudos to you.
Thank you, Eddie.
All right.
I'll take it.
So, Eddie, the last time you were here, we kind of gave you a hard time. Tonight, you're doing great.
Like I said, it's always a pleasure to be here, and you're always a very welcoming city, so I appreciate that. Congratulations. Have a great night.
Thank you, and thank you for the help and support of the Edison Company as we brought this project into fruition. We truly appreciate you. You've been great partners. Okay, notice to the public.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the original signing -- if the optional signing card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cellphones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for city council announcements of matters which council members would like place on a future agenda.
Thank you. Councilmember Gardner.
This Saturday, June 1st, is the Corona Del Mar 5K and Fun Walk and Dolphin Dash, so I hope everybody will come out for that. And, I'd also just like to make a comment. There's been a story in the media about our art collection, and I think part of it was based on just an offhand remark I made, questioning whether we knew exactly where all our art was. And, it was an offhand statement based on something that had come out of the Arts Commission, which was not any kind of criticism. It was just more a question. Are we archiving it correctly, and if so, let's be sure we are? But, we didn't have an answer. We now have an answer. We've had a few lapses over the years. I think just when people maybe transitioned some things. But, when I brought it up, it was not in the means of a criticism or an accusation of any sort. It was more of a question. Are we sure we're doing it right? And, it seems like we are now.
Thank you. Mr. Petros.
Just to come full circle, Mayor Curry, we had the Hoag Development Agreement before us a meeting or two ago, and I just want to report back that I had said that I would meet with our friends at the Versailles Apartments. Ms. Kim Brandt, the Community Development Director, and I had that occasion to go visit with them and had a very productive meeting. I thought it went very well and learned a great deal about the Versailles community as it relates to Hoag, but also their vision for West Newport. I'm better for it.
Thank you. Councilmember Dagel.
Yes, it was really great to see the Back Bay Science Center being utilized, the lab, public events there. And during the day, they have a lot of schoolkids coming down. It was a very significant project for the city, and I went to a lecture there last week, and they had various scientists sort of present their view of the Back Bay. And, it's a place that's very popular for scientists to study. It's very well endowed, and they just like going there and studying it. And, so, it was great to see the center being utilized. It was really something the city -- I know the city manager really put a lot of effort. We had to go through complicated leases with the state of California, so it turned out well, and mostly it's being used by people. So, I was very encouraged to see that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hen.
I have nothing.
Mr. Selich.
Thank you, Mayor. This weekend, Sunday, June 2nd, is the 20th Annual Balboa Island Parade. The theme this year is Balboa Island, yesterday and today. It's going to start at 11:00. The bridge to Balboa Island is going to close on Marine Avenue at 11:45, so if you want to get across the bridge, do it before then. Most of the council members will be riding in the parade, as well as a lot of floats and bands and different groups. Should be a lot of fun. It's kind of the kickoff of the summer season on Balboa Island. And, there's going to be a party this year, right after the parade, up in the block by the Village Inn. And, Dean Torrance from Jan and Dean Show is going to be there, so it should be a lot of fun. That's 11:00 this Sunday, June 2nd, Balboa Island Parade.
Thank you. It's been a busy time again in Newport Beach. I want to congratulate the many community volunteers who are involved in the Relay for Life, another successful program, this year at Newport Harbor High School. I want to congratulate the Exchange Club for once again presenting the Field of Honor in Castaway's Park. Many thousands of local residents had the chance to go up there and pay their respects to our veterans during Armed Forces Day, and we appreciate the efforts that they put into this. We had a special visit by the British Ambassador to the United States, Sir Peter Westpikott, and I had the pleasure of dining with him and presenting him the key to the city and talking with him about Newport Beach and the great relationship that we have with our friends in Britain. I also had the opportunity with a delegation from Orange County to go to Washington, D.C. I had a chance to meet with the Secretary of Transportation, Rayla Hood, with the Under-Secretary of HUD, and I actually raised, Councilmember Gardner, the issues that you've raised about the overhead percentages of our CDBG grants, so that they might be streamlined. I did have a chance to meet with many members of our congressional delegation, including Senators Feinstein, Congressmembers Daralisa, John Campbell, Dana Rohrbacher, and some new ones representing Orange County, Linda Sanchez and Alan Lowenthal, along with Congressman Ed Royce, to talk to them about the continued importance of dredging in our bay and of ongoing federal support. Let me make a note that on June 8th, Saturday morning at 9:00, in the community center right here at Civic Center, I'll host my first Meet the Mayor this year. I look forward to having a chance to chat with any of you that have questions about the city, to come on out and visit with us and see the new Civic Center. We'll also take some time, for those who are interested, and do a little tour of the Civic Center at the conclusion of the program. Okay. Now move on to the consent calendar.
Public comments are invited on Consent Calendar items 1 through 15. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. To the extent that any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council has received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Let me see if there's any items to be removed from the consent calendar. Councilmember Dagel.
I have none.
Mr. Hen.
None.
Mr. Selich.
I have none. I'd just like to make a quick comment on Item 13, Final Track Map for the condominium project at 1,001 Santa Barbara Drive. This is a long-delayed project. I think we approved this about seven years ago, and because of the economy, it got stalled out, but it's a high-end condominium project, and it's an example of how development brings great public benefit to our city. This particular project is providing $5 million in public benefit fee to the city, $5 million to Crystal Cove, I think a little over $2 million in park fees, and the affordable housing fee is somewhat in excess of $1 million, if I remember. So, it's really providing a lot of benefit to the community, and it's a sign that our economy's returning and the confidence that investors have in Newport Beach.
Councilmember Gardner.
Nothing.
Mr. Petros.
None.
And I have no items. I would just note that Item 14 is our quarterly business report, which has great information in it about the financial condition of the city, and I encourage everyone that has an interest in that to get a copy. And, once again, it shows that our revenues continue to be strong, and we are containing our expenses. So, there are no items pulled from the consent calendar. We'll now open it up for public comment on the consent calendar. Anyone having public comment on matters on the consent calendar, please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor Curry and members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. To short-circuit the new rule that members of the public have just 180 seconds to comment on 15 different items, I submit most of my comments in writing, even though very few in the public have access to those comments until the clerk posts them on the city website, which can be weeks or even months after the meeting. So, in view of that, I would like to speak to one of the items, which is this omnibus ordinance that you're approving as Item 4, making changes to 209 sections or subsections of the municipal code, presented as little out-of-context snippets whose effect one can't really judge without laboriously going back and comparing this massive staff report, 134 pages last time, 68 pages summarizing it this time, with the actual code to see what is being changed. I assume, as the staff report implied, that this was all pretty routine, so I honestly can't say I looked at it two weeks ago. So, when I looked at it in preparation for the meeting tonight, I was surprised to see that Title 17 of the municipal code, which is the harbor code, had been given a particularly thorough going over. And, my concern here is although most of it appears to be a routine updating of new titles that people in the city staff have and people in the county have, what seems routine to the attorney who proposed this may actually be making subtle changes to policy, and there were a few items that were not just changing titles of people's jobs. Since we have a harbor commission, I find it disturbing that these changes were not reviewed by them before coming to you. The harbor commission are designated experts and overseers of staff on matters of this sort, and they know the harbor code, and I think this should have been reviewed by them before it came to you. And, I have a similar comment as it applies to Item 9, which is the hiring of a consultant to coordinate the preparation of a citywide bicycle master plan. The consultant is promising in the report to work closely with a newly designated bicycle master plan oversight committee, but to the extent that bicycle matters relate to recreation and to parks and to parkways, I just want to remind you once again that the people of Newport Beach, through their charter, designated the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission as the go-to people. That's the body that is supposed to oversee and make recommendations to you on all matters related to those things. So, I hope the consultant will be working closely with them as well as with this new committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Are there any other public comments on matters on the consent calendar? Please come forward.
Good evening. I am resident on White Salesway, just across the street from you, and I'm hoping that I brought a photo of my view of your parking structure.
Ma'am, the parking structure is not on the consent calendar. We'll have public comments on general issues coming up in just a few minutes.
Okay.
Okay?
Sorry.
Thank you. No trouble. Any other items on the consent calendar you'd like to speak on? All right, seeing that, I'll close the public comment, and I'll bring it back. Is there a motion for the consent calendar, Items 1 through 15?
Mayor Curry.
Yes?
Move the consent calendar.
Your second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the four ordinance titles. For Item 3, ordinance number 2013-10, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach amending Chapter 15.45.080 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code relating to the periodic review of development agreements. Item 4, ordinance number 2013-11, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach adding, amending, and repealing various provisions of the Newport Beach Municipal Code. Item 5, ordinance number 2013-12, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach repealing ordinance number 9550 and ordinance number 9737 and disestablishing the Marine Avenue Business Improvement District. Item 6, ordinance number 2013-13, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach repealing ordinance number 95-4 and ordinance number 98-4 and disestablishing the Central Balboa Business Improvement District, also known as the Balboa Village Business Improvement District. The motion carries unanimously 6-0.
Thank you. Now, we're ready for public comments on non-agenda items. Ma'am, it's your turn now. Come on forward, and I think she's going to read something before you speak, but go ahead.
Yes. Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Okay, now you're on.
I'm Suzanne Babish, 1127 White Salesway, and we are sure hoping on our side of MacArthur that we will get some plantings. I brought a photo of our side of the parking structure, and was very surprised when it came to your open house to see that your side of the parking structure has a beautiful lush line of several-story-high trees standing shoulder to shoulder. Our side has two rather wimpy eucalyptus trees that don't shield much of anything. So, I'm disappointed, having just built here recently and all the headache we went through with glass, you know, reflective materials and how meticulous they are, and we've got cars which obviously have a lot of reflective material in windshields and looking into our living room. So, easily corrected, I feel, with plantings on our side of the structure, like is on your side. So, I'm hoping that you guys will consider that, as well as turning off the lights in the building at night, because it's very prominent, much more so than the bay, the pavilion. So, a couple simple solutions. I hope that we can be good neighbors.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sure, leave it with Ms. Brad here. Other comments? Please come forward.
Mayor Curry and members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. At this afternoon's study session, I commented on the difficulty the public has verifying that the city is actually living by the publicly-approved budget, in part because we don't see the nitty-gritty details of what operational expenses were anticipated, and hence don't know exactly what much of our money was planned to be spent on. In that respect, I would like to comment on travel expenses, a subject we don't hear much about, and note that in approving Item 12 on the consent calendar, which just went by, I believe the council just approved taxpayers paying, and I don't begrudge them this in any way, the expenses that the mayor and the Mayor Pro Tem may incur representing us at a meeting in Sacramento this fall. And, in the next item on the agenda, we may hear reports about activities like that, and sometimes we hear them in the announcements at the beginning of the meeting. In that connection, I would like to note that Charter Section 402, which Measure EE, carefully revised to reflect current policy, this is the Charter provision for council compensation, requires that all reimbursement for council travel expenses be ordered by the full council, presumably at a public meeting like this. And, in addition, the statewide AB 1234 Ethics Bill, specifically the part that is now found in Government Code, Section 53232, erects even more hurdles that elected and appointed officials, basically anybody who is on a Brown Act group, has to jump over those hurdles before taxpayer funds can be reimbursed, used to reimburse travel expenses. My comment is to wonder if it might be possible in the future to bring more clarity to how much, if anything, is being spent for council travel expenses beyond the item we saw tonight, and for what purposes, and if any of the oral reports that we hear are being offered as requests for reimbursement to comply with AB 1234. And then, if it's possible to increase transparency as the travel expenses paid on behalf of our Brown Act body officials, it would seem equally interesting to bring a similar level of transparency to staff travel expenses. We really don't know how much we're paying and for what, and I think the public has a right to know and should know that information. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, I just know that Item 12 is required by the League of Cities so that there's not a dispute as to who shows up and who's able to vote for the city. That's why we designate a delegate, so that they know who's supposed to be voting on behalf of Newport Beach. We get one vote. That's why we do this item. Are there any other public speakers? Please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor Curry and city council members. My name is Jim Warren, and I live at 1201 Surfline Way. It was nice to see the Edison Company provide a check, a very generous check, to the city for the constructions of their buildings, but I think the city can do much better from this time forward. This past Memorial Day weekend, all of the lights in the city hall and library were on at night from Friday night through Monday morning. There was not a person visible on site during that entire period of time. A large portion of the lights are shining on the ceilings and beams. These lights are of no value except for architectural enhancement. Everyone in this area has already seen the building, and we know what it looks like. No one else is around. The main building, with all of the lights on, is now the city council chambers and covered patio area. There are so many lights left on in this area that the sail is lit up on the backside at night, even without its personal lights being on, straight through reflection. In the lobby of this building is a bright message board, which shines across the street like a beacon. I did not know what this was until tonight. Sandra, my wife and I, are concerned about the waste of resources and the waste of revenue to continue this unnecessary lighting process. We are taxpayers, and we do not like wasting our money and valuable resources on these needless amenities. It is time to cut back on the money that is spent on necessary on unnecessary items, such as extra lighting within this complex, and restructure our priorities. Frivolous spending has been mentioned on many occasions as a waste of taxpayers' money. Unnecessary lighting should not be added to this list. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers on public comment? Please come forward. All right, seeing that, I will close public comment. We'll move on to oral reports from city council members on committee activities. Councilmember Gardner.
I have none.
Mr. Petros.
Mayor Curry, you mentioned, but I just want to reiterate that on May 18th and 19th, the American Cancer Society hosted the Relay for Life at Newport Harbor High School. 26 teams gathered and participated, raising approximately $40,000 for the American Cancer Society. The council critters was well-represented. Mayor Curry made some opening remarks to that day. It was a wonderful day to be out there in remembrance and celebrating life. I would also just make a brief announcement that on June 1st, starting at 10:00 a.m., at the Environmental Nature Center, SPON, Stop Polluting Our Newport, will be holding their annual board meeting. They have asked for a very notable speaker. Unfortunately, all they could get was me, so I will be addressing the SPON board at their annual meeting. If you have that opportunity, and if you've not seen the Environmental Nature Center yet, I would highly encourage you to come and get to see that wonderful asset in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dagel?
I have no reports, but I did want to respond about the travel item. I don't believe I have any items that need reimbursement, but I wanted to assure the public that city council members, we don't have offices here, we don't get city cars, we don't get cellphones, we don't get credit cards, and there's just no opportunity for abuse, so I think the public should know that, that those aren't the kinds of benefits that we have here, at least at the city council.
Thank you. Mr. Hen.
Yeah, I'd just add on to that. Actually, for this council meeting, I have a negative benefit. I was in Chicago on business and personal matters, and I flew home at my own expense to attend this council meeting, so that I can fly back to Chicago tomorrow morning on an 8:00 o'clock flight, none of which is at the cost of the city.
Thank you. Mr. Selich.
Just one quick announcement. Tomorrow at 3:30, the General Plan Local Coastal Program Implementation Committee is going to be meeting in the Corona Del Mar Meeting Room. That's Bay E, Room 1016. Again, that's 3:30 to 5:30 tomorrow afternoon.
Thank you. And I have none. So, we'll go now to Item 16, the Marina Park Coastal Land Use Plan.
Yes, Mayor Curry and members of the council. This amendment was actually approved by the city council back in September of last year, and approved by the Coastal Commission in March. Because the Coastal Commission made a number of amendments to the language, it's required to come back to you for final adoption. Once this, if this is adopted tonight, then we'll transmit the resolution to the Executive Director of the Coastal Commission. Once that's certified, then we can proceed with an amendment to the coastal development print for the Marina Park project to include the lighthouse feature.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions from members of council? Mr. Petros?
Mayor Curry, I remember in one of the previous action items that was regarding the Coastal Commission, there was some conformance language that we had to add. I didn't see that in this. Can you direct me to where that is?
It occurs in several places in the resolution. There are basically three things that we need to include in there. One is that we are adopting this per the modifications of Coastal Commission, that it's going to be done in full conformity with the Coastal Act.
Right.
And that will not be effective until it's certified by the Executive Director.
So, you have included the text, because I didn't find that one annotation.
They're all in the resolution.
Good. Thank you, Petros.
Seeing no further questions, let me open the public hearing up for public comments. Anyone in the public that would like to speak on this matter, please come forward. All right, seeing that, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the city councils. Your motion?
Mayor Curry, I would move it.
Your second?
Second.
Now, let the city clerk figure that one out. Please vote.
I gave that one to Petros. The motion carries unanimously 6-0.
Thank you. Item 17, donation agreement with Crystal Cove Alliance for Phase 3 of the cottage restoration.
Mayor Curry and council members, this is an item we discussed a little bit earlier this afternoon at your study session, and it proposes an agreement that the city would transmit an equivalent amount of transient occupancy tax assigned as a value of $20,000 per year to Crystal Cove to assist them in their Phase 3 renovations.
Thank you, Mr. Kiff. So, everybody is aware of what's going on here. There are 17 cottages yet to be restored at Crystal Cove. They do generate a significant amount of TOT tax to the city of Newport Beach, even though it's a state facility. So, what they've recently done, in order to finance the restoration of the remaining 17 cottages, they've raised their rates. The amount of TOT tax that we would receive on the increase is roughly equivalent to this $20,000. So, we are agreeing to basically provide a donation equivalent to the increase in their TOT tax for a specific period of time to help them finance that, and in turn, that investment will generate additional TOT tax to the city of Newport Beach.
Mr. Mayor, for purposes of any discussion, I'd move the item as recommended by staff.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this matter? Please come forward. Please come forward. All right, seeing none, please vote.
The motion carries unanimously 6-0.
Thank you. Item 18, appointment to EQAC.
In front of you, you have your paper ballots. There is one seat available. In order to be appointed, the nominee must receive at least three votes. Councilmember Petros votes for Charles McKenna. Councilmember Hen votes for Charles McKenna. Councilmember Daigle votes for Charles McKenna. Councilmember Selich votes for Charles McKenna. And Mayor Keith Curry votes for Joan Penfield. So the seventh member on EQAC will be Charles McKenna.
Thank you. Item 19, initiation of zoning amendments to the land use element, coastal land use plan, zoning code and/or zoning map, and a budget amendment to transfer funds from the unappropriated general fund to an expenditure account.
Thank you, Mayor Curry. Just one moment, I'll bring up the, I just have a very brief PowerPoint. This evening, we are asking the city council to initiate several processes that would accomplish amendments to the city's general plan land use element, and there are companion elements or, excuse me, companion documents that would need to be amended in conjunction with the land use element of the general plan, and that would include the zoning code and the coastal land use plan and potentially some of the city's development agreements. Since the general plan was first, or most recently adopted in 2006, and we have been administering the general plan, it's been apparent that there are some areas within the overall land use plan that could use some adjustments. There has been discussion that there is the potential to decrease some of the unbuilt development potential in the Newport Coast area as well as other areas of the community, and the potential to increase development potential in Newport Center, Mariners Mile, Lido Village, and perhaps the Newport Mesa area. There have been recent revitalization efforts taken by the city council, and there is an appropriate, it's an appropriate time to recognize those efforts through policies within the land use element. And there may be other amendments to the land use planned or land use element that may be appropriate. Staff is asking for city council direction to initiate the amendments as well as to appoint a general plan land use element advisory committee. This is different from the one that we just mentioned in the council comments. The general plan implementation, the general plan implementation committee also had a secondary function, which was to advise for the development of the overall local coastal certification plan. So that is a different committee, which is comprised of city council members and planning commissioners. This committee that we're recommending that the city council establish would be composed of two council members, two planning commissioners, and an appropriate number of citizens pursuant to the city council's direction. So through the efforts of that committee, we anticipate that there may be other amendments to the land use element that will be identified. We anticipate that overall that the amendments will require voter ratification once we go through the process. We anticipate bringing on a consultant, and that agreement for consultant services would be brought back to the city council in July of this summer. That we would begin the public outreach and meetings with the advisory committee that we anticipate will extend all the way through the fall of this year. At that point, we'll be in a position that we can finalize the project description and prepare the appropriate environmental documentation, and that the public review of that documentation would occur after the beginning of 2014. We anticipate going to the planning commission in May and following up with the city council in June. Ultimately, the city council adoption in June of 2014 with the proposed amendments to the general plan land use element placed on the November 2014 ballot. It's important to note that only the amendment to the general plan land use element would require voter approval, that any amendments to the zoning code, to the coastal land use plan, or development agreements would not require voter consideration. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Brant. The one, first of all, I want to congratulate staff. I think you've done a good job on pulling this all together. The one comment that I had, and Councilmember Gardner and I had a conversation about this, and I think we're in agreement, is that there need to be more citizen participation on the committee. So I would suggest instead of three, that we go to five at-large public members as part of this, but otherwise, I think this will put together. Councilmember Gardner?
I'm gathering from this that, given the timing, that we're not going to go through our usual procedure of having people apply, or are we?
I would anticipate that they would apply.
Yes, we do have the time to apply.
Okay, good. So our normal procedure's in. Great. Thanks.
Other comments?
Mayor Curry, I think it's important to note that state guidelines would suggest that a general plan be looked at and reviewed every five to 10 years. So I think that staff is now spot on. It may seem like our general plan is fresh and vital, and in fact, it is very usable, but it is good to go back in inventory and to make changes where it's appropriate. One thing that I've been led to believe is that at this point, this amendment process would have as an objective being a trip-neutral amendment, so that while we are considering changes to land uses in different areas, overall for the city, the loads on traffic and the needs for those types of capital improvements would be no different than they are under the current general plan, that there might be spot issues that need to be addressed, but overall, the quality of life that the citizens of Newport Beach currently enjoy and have agreed to through the general plan would be that that they would continue to enjoy into the future. So I think that this is a very, very good endeavor. It's timely, and I support this.
Thank you. Seeing no further council comments, let me open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the public who'd like to speak on this matter? Please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor Curry and members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. I actually had a comment on the previous item, but that's no longer relevant, so I have two on this one. First, from what I could understand from the staff report, a major driving force behind this proposal, which the staff report says is going to cost the taxpayers a minimum of $500,000, and that's just for a consultant, seems to be that the Irvine Company wants to move some of their existing building entitlements from Newport Coast to the Fashion Island-Newport Center area. Yet I assume that if the city staff initiates this proposal, it's going to cost them nothing. I also have to assume there is an alternate scenario in which the Irvine Company would announce their development proposal and initiate and propose and promote their request for a green light vote. So as a member of the public, I'm wondering how much of the $500,000 the Irvine Company would be obligated to pay in that alternate scenario. And my second comment is that if I'm reading the proposed resolution correctly, whether it's three or five community representatives on this committee overseeing the drafting of the ballot measure, they're going to be appointed entirely by the mayor, with the remainder of you on the council having only a veto power. All appointments are to be made by the mayor and ratified by the city council. Assuming we want a representative cross-section of the community, I find allowing a single person to make all the appointments rather extraordinary, and I think you should too. Thank you.
Isn't that just what we discussed?
I believe so.
Was that we're going through our normal procedure, which means that he will not make?
Right. Well, I'd actually be comfortable with that if we just wanted to do a mayoral appointment that we ratify. I don't know what the others think, but I would be okay with that process.
I would think if we have time and we go through our normal procedures, that gives everybody a chance to apply, and we...
If we're going to take applications, let's have, you know, there are some that the American designate, for example, the council appointees. I think what's the problem is we've got a hybrid here, and that's why they sort of wrote it this way. The council designees and the planning commission representatives, and let's vote for the public representatives the way we normally vote for people who are in commissions and commissions.
Mayor Curry?
Yeah.
I wanted to comment on one thing. Certainly, the Irvine Company is a local business. They are most certainly one of the larger local businesses. But I want to make sure that it's understood that this is not simply for the Irvine Company. I hold before you half a dozen letters that have been signed by business owners and property owners in the Mariners Mile area. This is the second batch of correspondence that I've received along the Mariners Mile corridor of folks who would like to see change. This is not something drummed up by some individual organization in the community but is for the benefit of all to open a public dialogue about the type of city they choose to live in.
Well said. Mr. Petros, thank you. Any other public comments? All right, seeing none, I'll close it, bring it back to the council. Is there a motion?
Move the action.
And that's the action with five citizen members.
Five citizen members.
Done on our typical...
I'll second that.
Typical way, and, okay, everybody, please vote.
The motion carries unanimously 6-0.
Thank you. Item 20, budget amendment to update certain revenue estimates and authorize fund transfers.
So, Mr. Mayor and council members, this is again a follow-up from our discussion earlier this afternoon, and I would beg of you not to have me go through the entire budget amendment as I did earlier, but if you had questions about it, Dan's here, and we can cover any questions you might have. But it's fairly complex, and that's because our accounting system is fairly complex, but I did give you the overview of it.
Thank you for this afternoon, because I've read this, I don't know how many times. I'm feeling more stupid each time I read through it, but this afternoon, I understood it. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Councilmember Daigle?
And I think for Dan Mataschevitz, it's your first budget?
It is. Thank you.
All right, is there a public comment on this matter? Please come forward. Seeing none, I will close the public comment. Is there a motion?
Move the action.
Second.
Motion and second. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously 6-0.
Thank you. Is there a motion for reconsideration?
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members voted with the prevailing side.
Seeing none, we stand adjourned.
You got to fly back to Chicago, huh?